This conference will now be recorded.
Let's call this meeting to order Tuesday, October the 13th, 2020. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Let's have the roll call, please.
Bruce Francis.
Present.
Christopher Farrar.
Present.
John Orr.
Present.
Lam Kwong.
Here.
Myrna Patrick.
Present.
Nadia Gardner.
Present.
Robert Strickland.
Here.
Clancy Adams here and Gail Hendrickson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Nadia seconds.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll say that it's unanimous. Thank you. So, business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that's not on the agenda. Those wishing to provide testimony and public hearings or provide our communications at the designated time must register in advance. Is there anybody registered from the public that wishes to speak, Gail?
I did not have anybody register.
Okay. Then let's consider the minutes of September 8th, 2020.
I move the minutes of September 8th, 2020 be approved as submitted.
Okay.
I have a suggested revision.
Yeah. Thank you.
Didn't mean to interrupt, but...
No, no, you got in there. That's what we were going to do, is that I noted that in the minutes of September 8th, we moved it from September the 8th to Friday, September the 18th, and in the minutes, it's August 18th.
Oh, I missed that. Thank you.
That's all right. So, we'll take your motion to approve as amended, and who's seconding?
Excuse me, those are the minutes from August that you guys approved from the previous meeting.
Are there minutes of September 8th?
No, that...
We already approved.
On September 8th, you approved the minutes of August 11th.
Yes, we're talking about changing the meeting date to September 18th instead of August 18th. That was the error.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, we got that all figured out? Are we seeing that we're changing it regular meeting to Friday, September the 18th instead of August the 18th? Clancy, are you on board with that now?
Which minutes are we approving?
We're approving the minutes of September 8th, which was the short meeting where we convened to shift the meeting through to September the 18th, which was a Friday. Okay, so, I'm looking for a motion. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of September the 8th as modified here.
I think Myrna moved, and Chris Farrar seconds the motion.
Okay, sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I abstain, and I think Lam has to abstain too because we weren't present.
Right. Two abstentions. Thank you. So now, we'll take the next set of minutes, which is the September 18th on the Friday.
I move that we adopt the minutes of September 18th, 2020, as presented.
I have one modification to the date listed in that set of minutes.
Right, August the 11th instead of August the 19th.
Yes.
That's right. That's what they did on the last... Never mind. It doesn't matter.
Okay. Once again, we've got to change that date from August the 19th through to August the 11th. So, I'll take a motion and a second to approve the minutes September 18th as amended.
So moved.
Don't say so moved. Make your motion.
Well, I'm going to repeat it anyway.
Well, so moved is lame. If you can't make a motion, don't make a motion.
If somebody agrees, make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Thank you. So, the minutes of September the 18th have been, there's a motion and a second to approve as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Was anybody absent on that one? I think...
Lam.
Lam was the only one that would have to be out of that. So, that's unanimous. Thank you. So now, we'll move to the public hearing. And this is a quasi judicial hearing regarding an application for a new 196-foot-tall tubular steel guide meteorological testing tower, and the proposed tower would be installed for meteorological research purposes as a preclude to potential wind energy utility project. The applicant is Joseph Wood, WPD Wind Projects, Inc. Does any commissioner have an ex parte contact of interest to report? Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest to report? Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter at this time? Hearing none, will staff please make their report?
Yes, good morning. This is Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. As you stated, this is a project for a 196-foot-tall tubular steel meteorological testing tower. It's proposed to be installed on Nicolai Ridge as part of a project to determine whether or not there is sufficient wind generation to support a possible wind turbine facility in the future. The tower is on a piece of property that overall is 320 acres in size, but the lease area that the tower would take up is 225 by 235 feet, or approximately 1.2 acres in size. It's in an area that's about 2.7 miles southeast of the intersection of Highway 30 and Hunt Creek Road. It's just outside of the areas that are subject to mass wasting, and it is outside of floodplain and wetland areas as well. So, the property is zoned forestry 80, F-80. As I stated, it's just outside the geologic hazard areas and wetland areas, but it is entirely within peripheral and major big game habitat. The comprehensive plan designation for the property is Conservation Forest Lands. The application was originally submitted on October, sorry, August 5th of this year. The staff deemed it complete on September 3rd, and our 150-day completion date would be January 31st, 2021. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, and I wanted to go through the applicable criteria and discuss those with you. So, we do have in the Land and Water Development and Use Ordinance several sections of Article 2 that would apply. These are related to public notice and applicant neighborhood meetings. Because of coronavirus and the pandemic this year, we had to switch up how we conducted the applicant neighborhood meeting. We increased the notification area from 300 feet to 3,500 feet, and we did allow the applicant to eschew in-person meetings, but they were able to conduct the surround, or contact the surrounding property owners via mail, telephone, and email. And those documents, which were sent out in late June, are included in Exhibit 2 of your agenda packet with the staff report. We also had the applicant post the property, which was done on September 18th. Because of the actual remote location of the site up on the ridge, we did have them install that sign at the intersection of Highway 30 and Hunt Creek, and that documentation is included as Exhibit 3 in your staff report. We did not receive any public comment. There were two agency comments that I'll discuss later on in this report. And then finally, we did have a published notice in the historian, which was published last Tuesday, so all of those criteria have been met. As I stated before, the property is zoned forest 80 or F-80. In this particular instance, a meteorological testing tower is not listed as either permitted or conditional use. So, as staff, we reviewed it, and based on the definition of a commercial power generating facility, which is included in Section 1.030 of the Land and Water Ordinance, we determined that it would be, that would be the use that it would be most similar to, and as it was a testing facility that could eventually lead to a full commercial power generating facility, and therefore would be considered an accessory to it, that's why we are here today with a Type 2A public hearing for a testing tower. In terms of development standards, the development standards for the F-80 zone talk about lot sizes, building height, and setbacks, among other things. The setback requirement is a minimum 30 foot from all property lines. The tower would be well over 1,000 feet from any property line, therefore exceeding that requirement. The tower itself does not meet the definition of a building as defined in Section 1.030, therefore the building height limitation would not apply to this project. And in order to verify that all setback requirements are met, we will be requiring as a condition of approval that a commercial site plan be provided to staff prior to construction of the tower. Section 5.000 to 5.030 deals with the process and conditions for a conditional development and use. So, I wanted to run through those because these are really the crux of what your decision will be based upon. So, in Section 5.015, Subsection 3A, we want to make sure that the proposed use is not going to conflict with any provision or policy in the comprehensive plan. And so, staff has reviewed those. Those are outlined in further detail in your report, which is in the agenda package. And we have found that all of the, that this application is able to comply with those provisions and goals, either outright or with applying appropriate conditions of approval, so that criterion was satisfied. I am getting a lot of feedback and noise, so if people could please maybe mute themselves if they're not speaking, that would be really helpful. Thank you. Okay. And I know Commissioner Gardner wants me to scroll down in the report here, so I'm working off two reports, so I'm working off my notes and the other one, so I may not keep up on the official staff report. That's on the screen. Subsection B, which talks about complying with all the requirements of the development ordinance and the standards document, again, this is a Type 2A conditional use in the F-80 zone, so that we will find through conditions of approval and review of the standards that all of those conditions will be met, or requirements will be met as well. So, we're good with that criterion. Section C talks about reviewing the site based on specific considerations such as size, design, off-street parking, lighting, fencing, transportation access, adequacy of public facilities, and topography, natural hazards, and natural resource values. So, what we're looking at is an approximately 1-foot diameter testing tower that's approximately 196 feet in height. It's going to be served by an existing logging road, and that service road already has a connection and access to Highway 30 via Hunt Creek Road. Per information that was provided by the applicant, there is not going to be a lot of traffic generated by the site. Would be the maintenance crew that would come in approximately on a monthly basis. All of the instrument data is going to be transmitted via cellular service, so there's no need for a person to come on a daily basis and collect that information. They are not proposing any lighting, signage, chemical usage, storage of any hazardous materials, no new roads, gates, or fencing is proposed for the project. In the applicant's response, he did state that they would also not be providing any parking or loading areas for the project. However, as the applicant has indicated, there would be maintenance, a maintenance vehicle that would come to the site probably on a monthly basis, and then we'd probably be looking at two vehicle crews coming in with the materials at the beginning of the project to install the tower. So, there will be a need for a minimal amount of parking, and based on the aerial photos that were included in your staff report, this area has been previously clear cut, and so there is sufficient space to provide one to two parking spaces, one being the minimum for the regular vehicle maintenance parking space. And that will be a condition of approval, and that those parking spaces should be shown on the commercial site plan that will be required. Okay. Criteria D looks at existing and proposed uses on surrounding lands and whether or not the proposed project would be consistent with those. So, the area, not only of the subject property, but the surrounding lands is entirely zoned F-80 and is in forestry use. So, again, with the appropriate conditions of approval, the minimization of the use of the land and the footprint of this tower, that criteria will be satisfied with two conditions of approval, and those would be conditions number one and number two. Then there's finally, we've got criteria, subcriteria E, F, and G. E and F deal with coastal shorelands and with aquatic areas. Neither of those would apply to this particular project or the subject property. However, Subsection G talks about peripheral and major big game habitats and making sure that the cumulative effects of development will not endanger big game habitat. And so, as I stated, if you reviewed the aerial photos, the lease area and the area immediate around, immediately around it has already been recently clear cut. We sent notices to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, but did not receive any comments back from their staff. We are not anticipating a staff that the proposed tower is going to conflict with any big game habitat any more than the existing logging activities, including the recent clear cut, have impacted wildlife on the subject property. Additionally, there is still going to be several vast acreages that will be surrounding the leased tower area that would still be available for large game habitat, and therefore staff has determined that that criteria, subcriteria G has been met. As we move on, Section 5.025 of the Land and Water Development and Use Ordinance does allow the planning commission to impose any additional criteria or conditions that may be required to ensure that the site is compatible with surrounding uses. Those would include things such as air pollution, glare, odor, special setbacks, restrictions on structure height or size, and also transportation access. One of the items that I wanted to discuss relates to the existing access road. Again, it's not predicted that there's going to be a significant increase of traffic using the road, as we're looking at probably about one maintenance vehicle per month. However, our development permit requirements do require that the local fire district chief review and sign off on the service road and fire emergency adequacy, as well as a review by the county's public works director. So, staff is requesting condition of approval number five, which would require both those agencies to review the road itself and its existing constructed state, and if any improvements are required to meet fire safety minimums, then those would need to be done before the tower could be installed. Then, moving on to the standards document, there are some criteria that specifically apply to utility, power generation, and solid waste uses. Specifically, we're looking at Section 3.523. It says that a commercial utility facility should not preclude more than 10 acres from use as a commercial forest operation. And as I have stated previously, the lease area that will be occupied by the tower is approximately 225 feet by 235 feet. That equates to about 52,875 square feet, or 1.2 acres. Therefore, that criterion would be met. Okay. Moving on, there are some additional conditional use review criteria in the standards document related to Section 3.525. These are almost identical in many ways to the criteria that are in the Land and Water Ordinance, but a couple that I do want to focus on relate specifically to ensuring compatibility with forest operations and to making sure that values found on the forest lands are conserved. And so, the first one that we want to talk about is that by allowing those, we would not be significantly increasing the cost of an accepted forest practices on forest lands. And so, again, to reiterate, the tower itself is approximately 196 feet in height. It'll be approximately 1 foot in diameter. It's supported by guy wires, which will extend out approximately 200 feet around the tower, and that total leased area, again, is about 1.2 acres. There's going to be very minimal human-based activity at the tower, as all the data is going to be transmitted via cellular service, and it is not anticipated by staff that this change would, or this project would result in a change to the cost of forest practices on this land. So, that criterion is met. The second criterion relates to increasing costs for fire suppression. As we recently lived through about a month ago on that meeting at September 8th, we dealt with a lot of wind and fire and smoke in the area, so it's definitely a very real concern. There are no utilities that are going to be required to service this tower. It's battery operated. It's made from tubular steel material. They are not proposing to store any chemicals or hazardous materials at the site or use them on site. And as we'll discuss in a little bit, there's going to be a perimeter primary safety zone around the tower that will be required, where possible fire fuel will have to be removed. So, that condition and criterion has been met as well, and will meet that through a condition of approval that will require a review by the fire chief. Subsection 3 requires a written statement from the applicant stating that they recognize the rights of adjacent and nearby landowners to continue to conduct forest operations on their property. That letter has been included as Exhibit J with the application materials, and that criterion has been met. And then, here. So then, the, moving on to subcriteria 4, these are again the ones that are very similar, where we talk about meeting the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. We talk about the suitability of the site based on topography. We talk about limiting damage to surrounding property and uses, and then we talk about adequacy of public facilities. So, again, there are no public utilities that will be required to service this property. As we have shown later in this report, with conditions of approval, they will be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and the property itself is outside of any geo-hazard flood zone or wetlands. Nicolai Ridge itself is not listed as a scenic resource in Goal 5, so we believe that that criterion has been met as well. We also reviewed from the standards document, Section 3.526, which looks at siting standards for dwellings and structures, Section 3.527, which deals with fire protection standards, Section 3.194, archaeological site protection, and Section 3.530, development of historic and archaeological sites. We have added conditions of approval, condition number one, which is the site plan requirement, which will detail, again, that 30-foot primary safety zone around the tower for fire protection measures. We've also added conditions of approval number three and four, which will require the applicant to demonstrate that all required materials have either been submitted to the state historic preservation office, and that SHPO has approved those materials, or something from SHPO stating that no information is required to be submitted to them. That would be condition three. Condition number four would then require, if something were to be found on the property of historic or archaeological importance or significance, that the applicant would immediately cease activities on the site and contact SHPO for further direction. And we believe that with those two criteria or conditions, that this, these criteria can be met. Finally, moving on to the comprehensive plan, goals and policies. We demonstrated earlier that the public notice requirements and applicant neighborhood meeting requirements were met, and that satisfies consistency with Goal 1. With Goal 2, the fact that the commercial utility facility for the purpose of generating power is listed as a conditional use means that at some point, that particular use was reviewed against the intent of the Conservation Forest Lands designation, and it was determined that that type of use could be appropriate as long as certain conditions of approval are applied. So, we are consistent with Goal 2. Goal 4 obviously is to preserve and maintain forest lands. Again, looking at the fact that this is allowed as a conditional use, that they are utilizing existing transportation facilities, will have a minimal footprint on the ground, this will ensure compliance with Goal 4. With regard to Goal 6, air, water, and land resources quality, we believe that with the required county regulations and the conditions of approval that we are recommending, that this will ensure compliance with any applicable state and federal environmental standards as well. Goal 9 relates to economic development and the goal to diversify and improve the economy of the state and Clatsop County. And so, obviously, if the testing proves fruitful and they decide to move ahead with a wind generation facility at this location, that obviously has the ultimate goal of helping to diversify the economy of the state and the county. Additionally, if, if we did have, or even if we didn't directly benefit from the power that's generated by these turbines, then potentially you still have the impact of cleaner overall improved air quality, which again, would be ultimately beneficial to not only the county, but the state economy as well. So, we believe that the project would be consistent with Goal 9. Goal 11 relates to public facilities and services, and the primary purpose of the Conservation Forest Lands designation is to conserve lands for commercial timber production. And so, again, as we have discussed in the staff report, we believe that there are a number of things, including minimal lease area, use of existing transportation systems, the lack of need for utilities to service the property. the lack of need for utilities to service the property help make this project consistent with goal 11. Additionally, in an area that's been recently clear cut, the proposed tower would not prohibit replanting of seedlings or other forestry activities on the surrounding land area. So we have determined that it would be consistent with goal 11. Goal 13, which deals with energy conservation. The stated goal is to conserve energy. And policy three specifically states that the county shall promote the application of renewable and alternative energy sources by encouraging the use of total energy systems. So, and what that is specifically stated as in the plan is, for example, electricity generated is generated. And then the waste heat is utilized for space heating and cooling purposes. So this particular component that we're looking at today is not for that full-blown energy system. It is the beginning step to determine whether such a system would be possible. So we believe though, that in the context of getting to that final goal and policy, that you obviously have to go through the steps required to make, reach that point. So we do not believe that the proposed project would conflict with goal 13. Finally, going through the Northeast Community Plan, there are several policies addressing this area and this type of project. Specifically, Public Facilities and Services Policy number seven, which states, "Power systems which utilize solar and wind-generated energy are well-suited for the Northeast County and shall be encouraged to locate here." And we believe obviously that this proposed project would be consistent with that policy and with the Northeast Community Plan. As I discussed, there were two agency comments that were received, one from Department of Aviation and the other from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Department of Aviation has a requirement for the applicant to submit FAA Form 7460-1 so that they can receive a determination for the proposed construction. Department of Transportation staff stated that they did not have any comments. So these are provided for the applicant's information. We will be addressing those comments through the use of existing regulations in our development ordinance. Finally, staff has recommended approval with conditions of approval. We have five conditions that are listed on pages, I believe it's 38 and 39 of your staff report. Then we also have six conditions of approval as well. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have questions of staff?
I do. This is John Orr.
Yep, go ahead, John.
Prelimarily, I think it was on page 38, and also in Gail's recitation there, there's the term, use of the term mass wasting as pertains to property and adjacent properties. Just so I'm clear, can you tell me what that means? Is that like something the hillsides give way after a clear cut due to erosion?
It relates to landslide-prone areas.
The second question I have is, is there any, I mean, I, my gut sense is there wouldn't, the answer would be no, but I just want to put this out there. Would there be any prejudice to opposing this ultimate goal of the placement of land mills by this approval? In other words, it's kind of got a momentum to it, and if both of them perhaps would fit in the slots for conditional approval that we approved today would carry over to the subsequent hearing on approving a conditional use of the windmills there?
Unfortunately, County Council is not available to attend our meeting today. And I wish she was because I would prefer to defer to her on that question. I would say that we do not set a precedent by doing this, that each project has to be judged on its own merits and the specifics of the project. And the proposed meteorological tower that you're looking at today is a very different project than what would be proposed with a wind turbine facility.
Okay, my final question is, the proposed, the ultimate proposed fill facility would not occupy a greater acreage than this so-called testing tower, correct? Or would it extend outward?
I believe it would extend outward, but I would defer to the applicant to answer that. And also, if they do determine at some point to come back with a wind turbine facility project, it would require a brand-new application, applicant neighborhood meetings, public hearing, and would be the start of a whole new process for the project.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Does anybody have any questions of staff?
I have a general question. Are we going to hear from the applicant? Because I have a few questions about the actual physical construction of the project. And I don't know if that's something Gail should address or if the applicant would address it. And also, kind of related to John's last point, I'm curious as to what one station like this is designed to capture in the way of wind data. How big an area will it represent for addressing how much wind power might be generated from that general region? Does it extend for a couple of miles in all directions of the tower? Or is it much more site-specific? And these are somewhat questions of curiosity rather than concern.
Yes, the applicant will have an opportunity to speak after you complete any questions for me. Commissioner Farrar, I would defer to the applicant for probably the questions you have regarding construction and the testing data.
Okay, so are there any other questions of staff?
Yeah, I have one. This is Nadia. I thought the applicant actually did a really nice job of reaching out to the neighbors there. And I applaud staff on extending that required notice area considering how remote that area is. However, here we are in COVID, but we're also in a, in a time of inclusivity. And so I'm wondering that, you know, going forward, you know, under COVID for a while still, and then also just thinking about how to be more community-oriented going forward, involving more people in terms of goal one. Does it make sense to do it the way that they did it? And you asked them to do it individually? Or does it make sense to actually have digital meetings? And is there a way that you, as staff, could put together some sort of a, a plan for that? So that, you know, under this current deal, that we have the best community involvement possible for these kinds of applications? But also moving forward, whether we have this opportunity to involve more people through digital medium?
Yeah, so Commissioner Gardner, staff did not prohibit digital meetings. We offered that as an option. We did not require them to do it. But that, what they chose was to work with property owners individually via email, mail, and telephone calls. Staff can certainly put together some sort of procedure or protocol. But we do have, have since March, made the option of digital meetings available for people who are then required to have applicant neighborhood meetings during this time.
Okay, so you give them, so I would say, so in this case, I think it really makes sense to do it the way that they did it. And as I said, they did a good job. But I'm wondering, like, so for example, the neighborhood meetings I've been a part of down here, it's such a, sometimes they can, it's really important actually that people get together, that it not just be, it's easier on the applicant to just go to individual people. But it's more community-oriented, I think, to actually have the meetings. And so I wonder if we should actually make it a requirement that they at least, you know, have a meeting and whoever shows up, shows up. But would that be part of the protocol?
Yes, staff can certainly look at that. I don't know that it's actually part of our discussion for this particular project today, unless you feel that they've don't met, they haven't met their applicant neighborhood meeting requirements.
Well, I'm not sure what you, I'm not, I don't have that requirement language in front of me. But yeah, I'm mostly thinking about, you know, well, okay, that's, that's a question. Is, under our criteria, has it, has the way that it happened met? But also, I'm just looking at going forward, each time we have an application, it needs to, I think it needs to be consistent even underneath, under the current pandemic. So I'm just looking, yeah, so I'm mostly concerned about that, is going forward.
Okay, so included in your staff report on page 11 are the requirements for the applicant neighborhood meeting. That's section 2.046. And it lays out how the meeting has to be conducted. I think if we take it as a very literal reading, they may not have met it because it really does require an in-person meeting, which just can't be accommodated in this particular time in our lives. So I think that we as staff have made the attempt to interpret that and meet the intent of what was to be accomplished while trying to adapt to safety protocols that are required because of the circumstances in which we live right now. I'd be happy to go through these one for you if you want to have a discussion and we can verify whether or not you believe that they have been met.
Well, where does it say that it has to be? In, I mean, it says it has to be a neighborhood meeting. So, but where does it say it actually can't be digital?
I don't think it says it cannot be digital, and staff did, has not prohibited digital meetings. But I, if I understand your comment, you're, you're looking more towards requiring that digital component.
Well, if it says that they're required to have a neighborhood meeting, then they're required to have a neighborhood meeting, right? I mean, and so by code, it looks like here, and you know, we have John in the room who's an attorney. You know, by code, it seems like they're supposed to actually have a neighborhood meeting, not individual outreach. And you gave them that opportunity, but it doesn't seem to actually meet this criteria. Just skimming over it.
Okay. Fine, you can make that determination. We believe that we have met the intent of it in order to accommodate unusual circumstances, which were obviously not foreseen by this code when it was written. You can certainly make the determination that staff has erred and that that criterion has not been met.
I can weigh in if you would like for what little worth it may have drawing upon common sense and, you know, baseline interpretation, the definition of a meeting. In this era, doesn't by itself preclude people gathering through, through a digital medium by, meeting by phones. I mean, if they're able to talk and interact in a meaningful way, I think that's a defensible position. At some point, probably does want to be some revision of the definitions to achieve the objective of neighborhood meetings by phone. That said, it's always preferable to look somebody right in the eye when you speak to them. And if you want to look at diagrams and exhibits, well, that certainly cuts for having in person. That's all I have.
So Nadia, where do you stand on this?
You know, just with this initial, this initial view, I think the intent of having the neighborhood requirement was that, was that a meeting where everybody could go would happen. And so I do, you know, reading this just now, I do think that the individual meetings don't meet criteria. Now, did the outreach not happen? It did happen, but I've just, the intent is actually the group, I think, so.
Okay, well, personally, I feel John is correct in his experience on this. I, I feel that staff has made an earnest attempt here. I think they've made the right decision under the COVID-19 requirements. I think we need to have a little bit of movement here. And John is correct in saying that maybe we need to change this in the future if COVID extends, such that our meetings are digitized. But like he said, and how staff said, when this was written, we weren't ever thinking of COVID-19. So I think that we've got to move in the times that are confronting us. And I think staff made a very good decision based upon what was available at the time. So I feel that the staff report should stand and that this has been satisfied as involvement with the community. Anybody else have questions?
I, I'd like to just make my comments on that topic that we've been on. I agree with all three of you, which may sound like it's not possible, but I think there's a thread there where we're all in agreement that for this project, it would have been nice if we had foreseen the situation and, and required a digital meeting of some form. I think we should for future meetings. I think that should be a requirement because I think the interaction between community members at a meeting setting is important. It has a different outcome than being contacted individually. So I'm in favor of accepting that the requirement was meant for this particular application. But I think for future applications, we should attempt to hold digital meetings. And one other comment with respect to notification. I think notification was given, and it was an expanded area, which is good. But I must say that the photograph on page 77 leaves it impossible for me to determine whether indeed a sign was there that let the public know that such a meeting was going to take place. So when the photographs are taken and it's submitted as evidence that there was a posting of the sign, I think a better job should be done of letting a person seeing this paper copy see that indeed the sign was pertinent and visible. I don't see it. Those are my thoughts on that topic.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for public testimony. This hearing is open for public testimony. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity and afforded the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. All speakers from the floor are to sign in, state their name and address before speaking. And if you're appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom you represent. Limit remarks to three minutes in order to permit all present an equal opportunity to speak. And testimony and evidence must be directed towards the criteria in the plan, staff report, or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Does the applicant have anything they wish to say?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, this is Don Bain with Arrow Power Services. I'm representing the applicant, WPD Wind Energy. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the project. I've heard some discussion regarding several aspects of it, some of them technical, some of them public notice and so on. I'm happy to address any of that questions that anyone may have, whether it's people in attendance or people who may subsequently want to know.
Yeah, can you please give us your contact information?
Yes, I'm in Portland, Oregon, residing at 6245- Yes, I'm in Portland, Oregon, residing at 6245 Southwest 39th Avenue, 97221. I may be reached at donbain@teleport.com and also dbain@wpd-usa.com and by cellphone at 503-730-3798.
Thank you very much. So does anybody have questions of the applicant representative?
I have a few.
Okay, Chris, you start.
I just preface it by saying I don't expect a huge amount of detail here, but I wondered if you could just explain to me the power source. I understand it's going to be batteries. I was curious what type of batteries and whether those batteries are going to be exchanged on a basis of when they start running low on power or if there's going to be solar panel charging or some other means of charging them. I wondered how well contained they would be in case there was any leakage. I don't know, again, what type of batteries these are, but some kind of containment around them. And then I have a few other questions, but maybe you could talk about the power first.
Yes, I'm happy to explain that a little bit. The logger for the instruments that's up on the tower is down at the bottom of the tower. It's an enclosed box, electrical standard box. And inside typically you're going to find either the little tiny nine volt type transistor radio batteries, or in some cases flashlight style batteries, maybe C cells or D cells. That is the full extent of the power that runs this entire installation. To recharge the batteries or to maintain their level of charge, we typically have a small solar panel approximately this size, which mounts on the side of the tower, very close to the, what we call logger, which is the electronics processing package and the cellular communication. So that little photovoltaic panel mounts on the, on the tower, down very close to ground level. And that's it for power.
Okay, thank you on that. I'm a guy that did a lot of remote sites for data collection, so I appreciate that. And the minimal power requirements now are truly fantastic and make this a lot simpler. I used to have to lug around big Marines deep cycle batteries to my sites. The other question I had was the guy wires and their anchors. I was curious how deep the anchors have to be set and whether that's going to be drilled in or exactly what procedure on that. And then on the guy wires themselves, I was wondering whether there was any thought to putting some kind of shroud around the lower 10 or 12 feet or so, so that they don't injure wildlife that might run through there. And I don't know if any big game would actually start running through there, but when something hits a guy wire, that can be a very serious impact to an animal. So I wondered if you were going to have protection. Sorry about my phone.
Okay, regarding guy wire anchors, we typically are using dead man type of anchors or screw in anchors. And which type will actually be used on the site depends on what the installer finds at that specific point in the ground where a guy wire needs to go. So a screw in anchor is typically, looks like a big corkscrew, metal rod. It could be drilled in four, five, six feet. That's going to, again, depend upon ground conditions. A dead man type of anchor could be a similar thing with a metal rod that has a plate on the end that would go down into a, an excavated hole, small hole. And typically that has backfilled with rocks or something of significant weight and then it's backfilled. In all those cases, the guy wires are tested to make sure that they have sufficient capacity for pull to make sure that the tower is safe. For guy wire safety, it's fairly common that these kinds of installations will have a yellow sleeve, a plastic sleeve installed on the very bottom portion of the guy wires so that it's visible, not only to wildlife, but also to people. This is, as you said, these wires are small, they're easy to miss while you're trying to pick your way through something like a clear cut. And those type of sleeves are what we would anticipate putting in here.
So Chris, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you very much. Took me a minute to find my mute button. Thank you for those answers, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other people wanting to question? Hearing none, we thank you very much for your questions and answers. Thank you. So are there, thank you. Are there any public agency comments? Hearing none, are there any comments from proponents? Did we have anybody registered, Gail, for speaking on that?
We did not have anyone registered for or against. I would like to point out that county council has arrived at the meeting, and I know we had a question earlier about precedent, so this may be a good time to pose that question as well.
I'd just like to put that in on the final questions section. So let me just move through here and then I'll bring county council in. Are there any comments from opponents? Hearing none, and there were no public agencies. So staff, please go ahead.
So again, this is Gail Hendrickson for county council, Joanna. We had a question earlier as to whether or not approval of a test tower would set some sort of precedent, precedence or establish some sort of favor or priority if they chose to come back at a later date with an application for a full, full blown, no pun intended, wind turbine facility. And I wondered if you could address that, please?
I apologize, I probably need a little bit more information. So they're asking for basically a temporary use and they're coming back for, if they came back for more permanent use, would it bind us in the future? Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, you know, I don't think so because I think a temporary use is generally more accepted without additional conditions. You know, when you look at a permanent use of any type of, of a facility, depending on what the, what the zoning is of the property, you can attach additional conditions, and I think that would be more appropriate because it will be a more permanent use. So you can look at it at that point and determine whether there needs to be any additional things, conditions to make a property fit, fit within the allowed uses of that zone, or if there's any other additional concerns that come up, perhaps after the temporary use has been in place. So, no, I don't think it binds you. You certainly can consider additional facts and criteria at the time that you review it for a permanent use. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I find that helpful. I guess one point on that is that if the anticipated results of this test with the tower come to fruition and the goal is realized of expanding the wind powered farm beyond the single acre that is before us today, then we may confidently anticipate perhaps a dozen or 100 acres or more acres in their possession, the owner's possession it is, to have their use converted from farm, I mean forest land to wind power generation. And so I guess that's, that's something to consider right, right here, right now. If, if that is a foreseeable result here, then, you know, there's that. That's all I have.
Okay, so are there any other questions of county council? Hearing none, we thank for, thank you to county council for their intervention on this matter. So are there any requirements from staff on the applicant's testimony? Gail, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, so are there any final questions of witnesses or staff? Hearing none, discussion is open for the planning commission members. What does everybody feel about this matter?
This is Lam Huang. Maybe a lead question? I've heard the project, I
Gail, can you hear Lam talk? Because I'm not hearing him.
Windmills have, was forwards, and we do have a lot of bird migrations going on. He, is it, do you consider this question? I guess it's a pain. Hello?
Okay, so I could only hear, I could only hear a very small amount of what you said, Commissioner. Your, your connections seem to lag and drop out consistently. Yeah.
He was asking about bird migrations and whether people have thought about the effect on birds, and that was a question I did have, but was willing for one small installation to let it go.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about this small installation now, but in like a future project, if it was expanded
I think you got to remember Lam, that when this goes forward, this is the temporary first stage, and if it produces a wind generation plant, there'll be a whole new process. And that's where we'll be able to ask those questions and get them answered. So personally, I don't think it really applies to this small installation.
Right.
Well, I do, so, you know, as John mentioned, it's like, this is the first step for a much larger project. And so I think it's worth, you know, at least having a small conversation about some of these things, even if this particular tower is not impactful. I will point out this tower is 20 stories tall. It's very large, but it's only one foot around. But in the end, those wind turbines that they are put in will be significant over hundreds of acres, and they're very, very tall themselves, and they do chop up birds and bats. Of course, all energy generation has negative, negative impacts, whether it be coal or solar or wind or hydro. And, and that's why conservation should always be the first thing that we're working towards because of that. But it, I mean, it's worth talking about because I, so the first thing I looked at was marble murelet, because that's our threatened bird that's going to go extinct in Oregon under our current process. And I will say, I looked up the marble murelet leave areas within the Oregon Department of Forestry, Astoria and Tillamook District. And luckily for this project, they are, those leave areas, that doesn't mean that they don't exist near the property, but the leave areas in Clatsop County tend, are more like around Saddle Mountain and up the Youngs Bay drainage, not on this section here, but that would certainly, that stopped plenty of wind facilities before those endangered birds flying through the turbines to get to the ocean. And they do tend to go up river drainages. So the Columbia is a nice open river drainage for them to get out to the sea. And so that is, that's one bird. And then, of course, birds of prey are very abundant bald eagle population and others could be challenged by, by the later project if it does come into fruition. I, I know that we don't have the groups that would be particularly interested in that future project in the room today, and I hope that they are, let know that, you know, like for example, Columbia Riverkeeper would be really interested, Audubon would really be interested and others to understand that this project, you know, is, is in the works so that they can do the kind, that kind of research and bring their testimony to us is, is really important.
But Nadia, I think you've got to realize that this initial stage does not make it absolutely positive that we're going to have a wind turbine farm. This is a stat, this is a static installation. I agree with you that if, and I underline, if they move forward, it will be a new process. And I agree with you that every one of those people should be notified because it is an important thing for bird migration. But we are not at that stage, and I don't think we need to be considering it for this particular application. Any other comments from everybody?
This is a testing tower to see if it would be, even be feasible to proceed with any other kind of, I think we should, we should direct our attention strictly at that. And with that regard, I would make a motion to approve the WPD meteorological testing tower.
Hang on, Myrna, Myrna, you, you can't do that yet because I have not produced public testimony. Any other, any other comments, please? Okay, so, public testimony is closed. Are there any procedural motions pursuant to ordinance 197.763? Hearing none, I will now request a motion and a second.
I move that we approve the WPD meteorological testing tower as presented with, subject to the conditions of approval that were submitted by staff.
Any second.
Oh, I'll second that motion with my mic on this time.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the power application, subject to the following conditions of approval and the regulations that are outlined in the staff report on page 32 of 33 and page 33 of 33. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so the next thing we'll move to is the resiliency project presentation. Gail, I'll get you on again.
So actually, that will be Monica Steele and public work staff will be leading that.
Okay. Can we please have Monica on board?
Just give her a moment. I just transferred her and made her the presenter, so she needs to get her screen set up.
Okay.
And I apologize because I'm just not very good at this whole screen sharing thing.
That's all right, we're all learning.
Yeah, but you think I get it by now. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Can you still see it? No. All right. Okay. Okay, um, I'm gonna try and, I apologize because I'm gonna show you the side of my head while I try to present this to you because I scared the, shared the screen that doesn't have my camera on it. So I want to thank all of you, and I'm not sure how many of you have heard about the Public Works Resiliency Project that we are working on, but this is an ongoing project. And, um, I'm just going to start with kind of giving you a little history on it. So the county has a responsibility should a natural disaster occur. And we play a critical role in that, whether it's countywide emergency preparedness, response, and/or recovery. And so the county is responsible for protecting and preserving the life and property, as well as coordinating the longer term efforts of rebuilding and recovery. So there are several county departments that play an essential role in all of this. And those, those departments include assessment and tax, emergency management, community development, public health, and public works, and the sheriff's office. And so conversations surrounding resiliency and alternate routes started quite a while ago, but back in 2012, it was actually incorporated into our strategic plan where it identified a project named countywide bypass truck evacuation route, where the county, the cities of Astoria, Warrenton, and Seaside considered improvements that could be made to Highway 101 and the development of an alternate route. Should an earthquake or tsunami evac occur, we would have an evacuation road or bypass. So in the 2015 TSP, it was mentioned as having redundant transportation routes increases the likelihood of maintaining some connectivity during and after such an event is therefore an important part of Clatsop County's overall resilience. And so based on all of this information, the county board of commissioners have prioritized the relocation of essential buildings and infrastructure outside of the tsunami inundation zone in an effort to optimize response during our community's time of need. And one of those critical facilities is our public works facility. And currently, our public works facility is located within the inundation zone. And so this map here, I apologize for, because it, it's pretty small for all of you to see. You can go online and, and expand it and make it bigger. But what it is, is, it's kind of identifying where we currently are, where we're looking at possibly moving to, and where some of these alternate routes or recovery routes are located. And so if you look at this map, you will see the current facility. Trying to get this out of the way, you will see that the, the current public works facility is located, there's a little tiny star up there where it says Astoria District Shop. And where we're looking to acquire property is that yellow square with the triangle in it that says acquisition phase one. So that, that acquisition site is, to some, commonly known as the sort yard. As I'll talk to in a little bit, we did learn that what is common to some of us is not common to all of us. And so some of the terminology that we've used has confused people, so I apologize to the public for that. But where the, where the sort yard is located is out past Fort Clatsop, towards the, on Fort Clatsop Road headed towards Lewis and Clark Road. And so the county, that's our first phase of the project. And then other things that we're looking at are those alternate routes. And so the second phase that we're looking at is what is known as the south portion of the main line. And that is on the map circled in orange with the, with the orange line highlighted. If you'll notice on, on that orange line that's highlighted, to the right of it is a black line, which is the current Lewis and Clark Road, and to the left, obviously, is Highway 101. Should it, or, and I apologize because I was in another meeting and they corrected me, and I said, shouldn't say should, but when a, a natural event occurs, the Highway 101 is going to be unusable. And it is highly likely that Lewis and Clark Road will have significant landslides to make it unusable as well. And the point behind resiliency is having redundant routes. And so making sure that if you can't use one and you can't use another, that you at least have a third option, if not more. And that's where the main line came into play. So currently, the county has what is called a purchase sale agreement for the sort yard. We entered into this agreement in July of 2020, and the county has 180 days to complete the due diligence process at no cost to the county. And we also have what is called a letter of intent for phase two. That one has a longer due diligence process for the portion, for the south portion of the main line. And that one has a due diligence process of approximately 20 months. And so the due diligence period would end in December of 2021. So those are the only two agreements that we have in place at this time. And those are the only two that we're putting any efforts towards as far as doing, doing more work to kind of figure out the feasibility of whether or not these projects are suitable. And so, um, sorry. So in regards to relocating the facility, since that's our, our primary focus at this point in time, there are several criteria that we're looking at to, to see if it's, if the site that we're looking at is a good option. And so one of those is obviously to be out of the inundation zone. But another piece of it is what land is available for us to even try to acquire. And then you'll see several others, the available public access, because something we need to remember about the public works facility is while oftentimes it's just a location where staff will congregate in the morning and then get the equipment that they need and then head out to the job site. There are also staff that provide public service, and the public needs to be able to have easy access to them. And so preferably having the site in, in a centrally located for South County, North County, East County, et cetera. And then also just trying to make sure that the site is safe in regards to geological hazards. And then what other costs are associated with it? Some, as you are all aware, some of our vacant land has significant wetlands on it, and the cost to mitigate those wetlands is extremely expensive. And so just trying to figure out what the overall cost to develop, to a turnkey site would be. So this slide here is for the sort yard, the proposed facility site. And this is a landslide susceptibility map. And so the site that we're looking at is approximately 50 acres. But there is, you know, there is landslide potential, but it is off from where we're looking to, 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 to build the facility. And, and please do not ask the question of whether or not that's to scale. That was just me putting a block on there, trying to show you where the general idea that we are looking to place the facility would be. In regards to the timeline, as I mentioned, we entered into a purchase and sale agreement on the sort yard. We entered into that in July and the due diligence at the end of July. And the due diligence process ends at the end of January of 2021. We are currently working on the goal exception for that property. And then there's several other, several other items that we're working on. We're having a phase two environmental assessment done. We are going to begin working on a traffic impact study. And, and then we're also doing some additional survey. At this point in time, if the county, if the board of commissioners decide this is not a site for us, we walk away. We, it's no cost to the county other than the work that has been done that we've paid for to, to, to try and address some of these due diligence questions. If we do decide that we need more time to address the due diligence process, we do have the option to extend for two 90 day periods at a cost of $15,000 each. If, if we do move forward with the project, what we're looking at is having the project completely finished, which means all, all of our shops, all of our offices, everything would be out there by 2025. And you'll see the second part of the project, phase two of the main line south. Again, that due diligence process is much longer. And we are proposing that construction would begin in 2024. But that's, that's determined upon whether or not we actually, through this due diligence process, feel that there is a need to do any construction. One of the, the options that we're looking at is if the county were to acquire this property for a recovery route, can we just keep the gates locked and leave it as is, but have the, have the land there? So, so in a natural disaster, we have that option to be able to reach the south portion of the county. One thing I would like to point out is we do have two other, besides our, besides our Astoria site, we do have two other substations, one out in Napa and one out in Jewels. So there is access to those parts of the county as well. So hopefully, all of you received a questionnaire because we are trying to go through the public process to get input on whether or not countywide, they, there is felt to be a need for this. And so, so we sent out this questionnaire, and we received approximately 2,650 questionnaires back. And in regards to the responses that we received, the, the first and foremost was, do you support moving the public works facility out of the tsunami inundation zone? And as you can see, 69% said yes. I will reiterate that this is, when I have done other presentations or got feedback from the community, oh, we did receive a lot of not sure questions, or not questions, but answers. Because again, people weren't really sure of the, the locations that we were referring to when we referred to sort yard, pipeline, and north and south main line. So in the second question, do you think that Lewis and Clark Sorty Yard would be an appropriate location? We received 30% saying yes and 25% no, and again, the 46% not sure. In regards to how proactive the county should be in pursuing emergency and alternate routes in preparation for a seismic event, we had a 56 response rate saying very proactive, 30% saying somewhat proactive, 12% saying not proactive, and 2% saying not sure. Do you think that the county should acquire existing private roads for alternate or emergency routes if they are currently available? 66% said yes, 29% said no, and 5% said not. And if the county should, should acquire these alternate or emergency routes, should they be approved to county standard? 54% said yes, 19% said no, 17% not, said not applicable, and 10% said not sure. The question of if these alternate routes were obtained and improved, should they be open for general public access? 64% said yes, 28% said no, and 8% said not sure. And then we asked everybody to please rank the following potential projects in order of importance. The public works facility relocation, the 44% ranked that as being the top priority with 25% saying that was a, a low priority and 20% saying not sure. Pipeline road came up with 17% putting that as the highest priority and 27% putting it as the lowest priority and 29% saying not sure. In regards to the Lewis and Clark Main Line North section, which is approximately two miles long, 7% put that as one, 15% put that as four, being the least important, and 32% said not sure. And then again, for the Lewis and Clark Main, Main Line South section, which is approximately five miles long, 1%, or I'm sorry, 8% put that as a top priority, where 25% put that as the, the least high and 32% saying not sure. I did want to say, I skipped over it, but I did also want to say, when we were going through the process of identifying potential sites, we did look at six different sites. And again, I apologize because some of these are just kind of terms that we've kind of become familiar with. But we, many people said, why did you not, why are you not considering the North Coast Business Park? One of the primary reasons there is it's always been the county's intention, or not just the county, but as well as all the other applicable taxing districts, to get the North Coast Business Park back on the tax roll. That's where it's going to be the most benefit to the county. Additionally, as I mentioned previously, there's significant costs to mitigate wetlands. And in order to have the, the amount of land that the public works facility would need, we would be looking at approximately one and a half to $2 million in just mitigation costs, where to acquire the property that we're currently looking at is, we're in a purchase sale agreement for $900,000. So the, the cost to buy the property that we're looking at is less than the cost to just mitigate the wetlands on the North Coast Business Park property. Additionally, we need to be thinking about the traffic impacts. While we don't anticipate traffic impacts from the public works facility being significant, it is still not necessarily safe for heavy equipment to be trying to pull out in such a highly congested area such as the North Coast Business Park. Some other areas that have come up is Dolphin Avenue, which is where ODOT is currently located. People ask, well, why don't you co-locate with ODOT? ODOT has outgrown their current facility and has asked about, you know, other sites that we might be able to co-locate with them that are larger, that we would be able to both fit at. There's another property, and let me see if I can go back. In my slide. This one. So there's another property similar to where the sort yard is located, that is the Nikis property and the Angus property. And those are, are also both sites that we looked at. Both of those have since sold, so they are no longer an option. We also looked at Crown Camp. That is farther south. And while that does have a lot of potential to it, again, it's not necessarily the most convenient location as far as a central location for the public who needs to come in and have access to the offices. And so, so we have looked at other sites to try, and we continue to look at other sites to see what's going to be the most cost effective, as well as a good benefit to the public. And so go back, going back to my last slide. And we have been trying to keep the public up to date on what's going on. We started with our first virtual meeting back in August, on August 13th. We had approximately 60 people in attendance for that. We learned a lot from that in regards to community feedback. And so we have been, and, and since then, and, and prior to that, we have regularly been receiving questions. So we've been trying to build our resiliency project website that can be found on the county website. And on there is a list of frequently asked questions. And so we encourage the public to go there because there have been a lot of great questions regarding this project. And, and we feel that we've answered them to the best of our ability. But if there's more questions, then we want to continue to, to look into these things. The board did have a work session on October 6th, at which point in time we were directed to continue with the due diligence process, to continue on with these two that we have agreements on to, to see what the outcomes of the due diligence process are. And then once that timeframe comes to an end, the, we'll be going back before the board with more feedback from the community, as well as findings from, from the due diligence process to determine what the next steps for these projects are. And so that's the end of my. And so that's the end of my presentation. And so I also have on the the meeting is Public Works Director Ted McLean and County Engineer Dean Kurnan. And so we are all here and happy to answer any questions you might have. And I'm gonna give you back my screen, Dale, maybe.
So does anybody have questions?
I had a couple of quick questions here. One relates to the map you showed of the sort yard with the landslide hazards mapped out. And there were kind of two two main masses, one to the west and one to the south. My question was, does that mapping of the hazard zone include the run out zone of a potential slide, or is that the mass of material that might move? And if it's just the massive, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, it's my understanding that it's just the mass of material that might move. It's from the landslide susceptibility website through the state, I believe it was, but I can I can confirm that.
I was just curious then if anybody is able to make an estimate of what the run out of some of that slide material might be and whether it would impact the proposed location of the the county facilities. So that's that's one question. The other I'll say is that I'm really impressed with how many people responded to the to the poll on the different options. That's that's really quite remarkable and very helpful, I think. And I think there's some real solid definite consensus of what what's important to do and and how important it is to do. And those first, those first questions were easy to understand and respond to. But I must say that the seventh question where you ask people to order their priorities got very muddled because some of the things seem to be interrelated. And so if you have a high priority for moving the county yard to this to the sort yard, you also want the road in good shape to and from there and to the rest of the county. So they kind of go together and I I think there may be some way to analyze that statistically to get it a result, but that aside, it's a good survey and I just wonder with what what I heard in that, I guess they were public comments at a county commissioners meeting where it seemed like anybody that had a little bit of apprehension about this plan had to do with increased traffic in their location, which is always going to be an issue. And I wondered if there are concrete numbers as to the typical numbers of trips of large trucks and other machinery that go in and out of the county yard in a day and how much impact that would have on the local residents that live along the route. And the other thing that people were concerned about is they did feel like you focused on some certain known properties rather than doing a search based on four or five necessary elements that the property must have in order to meet it. And I'm I'm also curious as to whether this property location, it it looks very safe from tsunamis and some other things. But is it accessible to bring materials in and out of in an efficient way in times of disaster, but also in normal times? Are we putting it in a place where we're adding a whole bunch of cost to getting material in and out? So that that's my questions and you probably.
So I will comment in regards to the there there were a lot of concerns surrounding the the neighborhood and the traffic impact. So we will be conducting just a traffic impact study based on the traffic impacts out there. We do have counts, road counts, daily road counts, car counts for out there, but we will also be evaluating just kind of in and out of our own public works facility. I would let Public Works Director Ted McLean speak to in regards to some of the other comments you had surrounding the looking at the the properties. Because as I did mention, we are trying to make sure that it's a site that is going to be easily accessible while still cost effective, while also evaluating available land that is needing the need. Some of the things that we've looked at when looking at the 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 site size is one thing that we are going to have to deal with in a natural disaster is debris. And so one of the one of the parts of the planning process is to make sure that we have adequate space to not only store materials, because these roads, while while we're looking at them as recovery roads, it's not to say that they aren't going to have their own damage done to them in a potential significant size event. But having having the materials on location to be able to then go out and address the road needs the damage that was done, as well as having a site to be able to dispose of some of the debris that we're going to have to be dealing with during this event. But I'll let Ted McLean speak to in regards to the other questions that you have.
The point of landslides. We have Tom Horning, the local geologist that's working with us now to give us a report on the things that you're talking about with the properties. And he's working on it now. We don't have any reports back as of yet, but we can report that back to you. As far as efficiency and the site efficient sites for circulation of materials and supplies, the site is really, really more central in a sense to these are rock sources, and that's the main material that we're using for roads and asphalt and oil for chip sealing roads. It is more central in that most of our rock pits are all in the only areas off of Young's River Road is one central location for a rock pit as well as out Highway two oh two. And then on South County, our rock source is the Knife River source there just out of Seaside County Junction. So no matter what in a and there are private rock sources off of the main line also that are owned by Greenwood. So as far as efficiency of moving materials around, those sources are fairly close in the county. We do have strategic stockpile sites where we maintain a rock source in case of emergencies and projects that we have. So we'll continue to be using those type of sites. The Crown Campsite is is something that maybe we'd look at in the future, but that was one of the uses for that site is to be able to store materials and be more effective in restoring things in that area. So I don't know if that answered all your questions.
Yes, I appreciate your answers from both of you. Thank you very much.
A question of Ted. Where along the main line is there highway quality rock quarry? I I thought it was all, you know, classic bridge was all low quality rock, not not the kind of basalt hard rock that has needed to be highway quality.
That's true, and I'm not sure as far as the gradation of rock in those pits. But in in the it would have to come from the quarries that I spoke about earlier. The ones that are are privately owned. In the event of a disaster, you know, we have to get to a resource. And even if it was low quality, we would have to get to that resource to be able to get things reestablished.
Is is there any hard rock near the main line?
There is a pit, and I'm not sure the quality of rock. There is a pit on the South Main Line itself.
Okay, I I noticed in Monica's presentation today, the absence of the word bypass. Has it been searched and deleted from the talking points?
So in regards to a bypass, a bypass would really require the state to be involved in those conversations because ultimately it would require state funding to find an alternate route from Highway thirty or Highway one oh one. Right now, what we're focusing on are potential recovery routes or evacuation routes. And so while there have been conversations in the past about a bypass, that's not what the county is looking to accomplish because we're not looking we're not looking to to take over the road systems for the state.
I have I have questions.
Okay.
So the as far as moving the to the sorting yard, the are you planning on using Lewis and Clark as the main road to coming in and out? Or is the or are you planning using the the main line? And my question is also there is a, I mean, how large? How wide is the main line that you are proposing to to build?
So the the main line is an existing road. It's a gravel road. It's not, as far as as far as regular use, if if the county were to move to the sort yard, we would be we would be using the route like depending on where the employees work from depends on whether or not they'll be coming from Lewis and Clark or Fort Clapham Road to get to the site. And then depending on where those crews are then going out to work would kind of depend on which direction they would go, whether they would take the Lewis and Clark route or take the Fort Clapham route. In regards to the main line, again, at this point in time, it's not a road that that the county is looking to immediately start construction on. One of those is because a lot of the community feedback has been a lot of concern about increased traffic in the area. So right now, what the county is focusing on is recovery routes. These roads are currently used by logging companies and they're gated off. And so one of the things that we have worked with on our county council is to find out is if it's a county road, then then can we keep it gated? Because typically, public roads need to be available for public access. But there are certain conditions where they can continue to be gated roads. And so at this point in time, we wouldn't be looking to immediately start developing. One, because that hasn't been the 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 direction that the community has wanted to go. But two, because there's a significant cost associated with it. One of the other frequently asked questions is how is the county going to be paying for this? So the county has been building up reserves, the Public Works Department has been building up reserves because they know that they need to relocate their facility. Currently, there is approximately eight million dollars set aside to do this project. And then in addition, once we do sell the existing Astoria location, those monies would also be able to use to to help pay for the construction of a new facility. So I I'm not sure if I answered your question. We wouldn't be using the main line as a regular route to to head to South County at this point in time.
But there is a plan in the future for that, right? I mean, I heard that the there was a plan that was possibly up to a hundred feet for.
Yeah, so the 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 purchase sale agreement does have a hundred, in certain areas, a hundred foot right away. But I think the important part to remember about all of this is there is a plan, and we're going through the community outreach process to figure out what is the what is the need and what is it that the community wants? So we started with a plan and we do have a purchase sale agreement that would include right away access in some areas to a hundred feet, some areas to sixty feet. But that does not mean that once we, if we are to acquire that property, that once we've acquired it, that we're immediately going to develop it into a road.
Are there any other questions? Well, I've got one from your survey. I thought it was fairly interesting that question number six, if these alternate routes were obtained and improved, should they be open for general public access? And two thirds of the participants said yes. And yet, when you come down and list the access roads, Pipeline Road, Lewis and Clark Main Line, and Lewis and Clark Main Line South, you've got seventeen percent, seven percent, and eight percent. Is this, do you gather from that that people want the access, but they didn't really know what Pipeline Road was and Lewis and Clark Main Line was? Is it just that they didn't understand what was going on?
Yeah, that's the feedback because as I mentioned, when I presented to a couple other people or I've answered questions, whether it's been on in emails or on the phone, people didn't know where we're talking about when we talk about the main line. And, you know, I I I apologize. I I've only lived in Clapham County for almost twenty years, but my husband grew up here. So I've come to learn those terms from him, you know, growing up in the area and and trying to figure out another term to identify these roads by that that we would be able to easily identify. So I think having having learned from this questionnaire process, if we had included the map, I think it might have been a lot more helpful for people, but.
You nailed what I was gonna say. I I think a good map would have helped. And I know that most of us commissioners here have been around long enough that we know what those terms are and we're conversant with them. In fact, Robert Strickland and I have been pushing on that main line as a bypass access for forty years or more. So yeah, it's something I think that maybe next time if we go through this again, we have a very clear map indication of what we're talking about because there probably are a lot of newcomers to the area that don't fully understand that old terminology. But thank you for it's good that we got that participation. I agree with Chris. Surprised me that we had so many people take a couple of minutes out of their day and fill out that questionnaire and send it back. So good job. Thank you very much.
I think Nadia has a question.
I got a lot of negative feedback on the survey. The people that I saw online and that I talked to really were confused by it. And I don't think that it should be considered, you know, data to rely on for the pulse of the county. I actually, the vast majority of the county did move here in the last twenty years. They're not old timers. And so most people don't know what those places are. And there was very little information on the mailing to get people to understand it. And we we've been talking a lot about what I'm now going to call community participation, community involvement because we're redoing the comp plan and that's goal one. And I think that COVID is teaching us a lot about better ways to be inclusive, to really involve the community in decision making, especially in planning. And so, you know, what I did when I got it, and I, you know, I'm on the planning commission. I had no freaking idea what you were talking about. And I we got one presentation, I think, year, year and a half ago about it. And that didn't help me that much. So I went on the county website and I dug around until I found the webpage so that I could better understand it before I answered it. And so, you know, number one, just having a link for people to be able to do some background research would have been really helpful and see those maps online. um, do some background research would have been really helpful and see those maps online. And of course, there's a lot of people who are challenged by internet in our county. So that has its limited basis. But, um, the other thing that I think would be really great is recording this this kind of a presentation and having it available on your webpage and Facebook so that people can actually like see, because this kind of discussion I think is really helpful for for everybody to to understand versus having something on a written page or minutes. Um, so anyway, I just, I encourage all of the county departments to try better, try to do better at, um, really telling the story to our communities and 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 telling that story and then inviting feedback so that we can get more valid statistics on who supports what and who makes what a priority. I also received a letter from neighbors challenging this. And so that's the other thing is I think doing this kind of work upfront earlier than now would have been probably something that, um, would have improved, you know, you have the brims against you. If you have the brims against you, you're in big trouble. Um, so doing this kind of outreach earlier, I think, could have, could have gotten out in front of some of that neighbor opposition possibly. Um, but, uh, it sounds to me like the Public Works Yard, um, makes sense as far as I can understand. Um, the other routes, I know Bruce and others have a lot of background on that, but it's really unclear to me today that those make sense. So, um, I I'd like to know about that a little bit more. And I'm sure the community would like to know about that a little more before it really moves forward. And just on the wetland mitigation thing, so the county has been talking about wetland mitigation and trying to find a solution to the North Coast Business Park as as long as I've been involved in county governance. And I'm an environmental scientist myself, so I follow it. And, um, I feel like the county has a lot of opportunity to mitigate within your own properties, but have chosen not to. Um, and so, um, and the North Coast Business Park is is not developing because of the high expense of mitigation. So it, you know, in terms of whether this this project or others, it seems like there should be a solution within your county ownership to be able to, um, improve wildlife habitat. There's huge swaths of land that you could do that on um, at the same time as as meet some of the goals in the business park, if that's really a priority for you. Press, of course, is the expert on that work. So I encourage you to work with them on that.
Thanks. We do regularly work with Press and we do continue to regularly evaluate the county owned lands for potential wetland mitigation. So I appreciate that feedback as well.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, we thank you for your participation and that was a good update. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So let's move on to the comprehensive plan update.
Okay, um, as we discussed last month, uh, between January and March of this year, staff sent some drafts of revised goals one through four off to DLCD for courtesy review. Uh, last month you looked at comments from DLCD on goal one as Nadia calls it, community involvement. And today you have before you goal three, which deals with agricultural lands. And so I am here to listen to your input and that's all that I have to say on this. Thank you.
Okay, does any commissioner have comments?
Um, I submitted mine as written comments that I hope you received in a PDF attachment to an email I sent. I had quite a few comments and so I don't want to take a lot of time here going through all of them. I did think that overall the document was, was helpful for a starting point, but I I think it needs quite a bit of revision. Um, just, just in a general way, I'd say with regard to the discussion around farms, I think there could be additional discussion, um, describing in more detail what kind of farming goes on in the county, what size of farms are common in the county and what trends there are to the size of farms and the kinds of things that the farms are being used for. And other things such as are most of the farms irrigated or are they dry, so-called dry farm, not that it'd be dry here, but, uh, so there's a lot more there in my comments that I wrote up. Discuss some of that. I made a comment about the pie chart. You know, at first they look real great, but when you try to really visualize what the percentages are, it's pretty tough to do. So, um, especially when they're not looking at straight down, normal to the circular cross section of the pie. You get distortion, so you can't really tell uh, in perspective what the percentages are. And you could simply put percents in those different pie wedges. That's a small point. There seem to be some discrepancies, a few errors here and there, such as the pie chart showing male versus female farmers and what's said in the text. Uh, I think the reviewer pointed that out. On the climate change, I had a lot of wording changes. They may seem small, but, um, I think they're important. Uh, if you look at the first one in the list of items, uh, kind of midway on what you're seeing on the screen now, um, more summer droughts, actually, um, I would strike droughts. Droughts can come in winter as well as summer. It's drought is a period of time where there's much less precipitation than normally occurs. And we may in fact see drier wet cycles than than necessarily just longer summers. Um, so those kind of things, they they seem small, but they're relevant. Uh, with allergies, for example, uh, I think you're mostly talking about airborne stuff. Um, pollens and dust in the air, maybe viruses as well. I I don't know if you're talking about, you know, I don't think you're including food allergies and things like that there. So, um, those, I I I think the document needs to be go out, gone through with fine tooth comb and kind of cleaned up. And then, uh, just some real general comments on the cannabis, part of the document, I I felt like the whole thing needs to be rewritten. My written comments kind of give you some guidance there. I I feel like a, a real distinction needs to be made between cannabis sativa and hemp. Uh, hemp has a specific maximum THC content that's uh, the distinction there, and I think it's point three percent. But those things need to be checked. I also think more should be said about what, what, uh, possibilities are in Clasup County for growing hemp as a agricultural crop. And I suggested a couple of sources of information on that. And, uh, so, um, I'd let you read over my comments for what they're worth and I I hope they're helpful. I didn't mean to just pick on all the things I found that were maybe minor errors or or things that could have been stated a little differently. I did go into the policies and how I individually felt about some of them. And some of them I would actually just outright reject. Others I felt needed a little more clarity in exactly what their intention is. And and so I'll leave it at that and give others a chance to chime in.
Anybody else want to chime in?
I'll chime in as usual. Um, I really appreciate this. This is a, yeah, like a great start. Um, my question was why, why do we care whether farmers are male or female in the comp plan anyway? So why does that even need to be in here? But, um, but I do think the aging issue is is definitely of concern as as we're finding that farm families are aging out of their properties, um, for the large, larger properties anyway. Um, for the climate change section, I really appreciate, um, Chris, your detailed attention to that. One of my questions was just around, um, well, you know, climate change is affecting a lot. And this is the agricultural section. And I wonder if that list should really focus on the things that will impact agriculture? Because if you're gonna talk about climate change more broadly, um, it's a lot more than this list. And so like for 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 the ocean, and so in terms of our fisheries, you know, we mentioned here that there's gonna be stress on fish, but really there's gonna be fish kills, right? And it's around marine heat waves in both the rivers and the ocean. And that is causing anoxic water conditions. And also ocean acidification, which is leading to, um, creatures not being able to make shells, which is the basis of the food chain, which means that our salmon will have nothing to eat, nor nor will most of our upper trophic fish species. So, um, you know, but that may not go in this section. It should maybe go in another section. So I'm wondering if you could really focus this climate change section on agriculture and how it's gonna impact agriculture and have climate change sections in the other areas that would focus more on fisheries and things like that. Um, and then, um, in terms of elk, I wanted to mention, and I don't know, I haven't been following the elk process very deeply, Gail, but, um, there's no mention of protection of predators and the importance of predators in terms of of balance. And, um, so particularly cougar. Um, um, I think that's an important conversation to be had. You know, we talk a lot about hunting and culling, but not much about protecting the predators that would have normally kept them in check anyway. Instead, we have cars, I guess. Um, so I'd like to see something about that. Um, and then I had the same, um, questions around the goals. Um, I feel very uncomfortable with expanding housing on farmlands. I think that that is something that people who own farms now want. But it's, it it results in an increased price of farmland. And so you have the people who currently have land that want to live on their land or want to have worker housing or other things, which is somewhat allowable already. Um, but then there's people who just want to keep, you know, every time you put a new house or an ADU or anything on farmland, it increases its price. And so that excludes people from the marketplace, which is um, kind of ironic, because some of the young farmers are the ones who are pushing for this, but they're the ones who were challenged in the first place in purchasing their properties. And it will make it more challenging for new, younger farmers in the future. And so I also agree that policy C, um, is very problematic. And I I'd like to see it more about, um, you know, it maybe a like a more broad statement around, um, exploring some of the challenges to, you know, new farmers or something. And so then you have a, an opportunity to really look at what are all of the policy solutions to these problems, not just ones that will, uh, uh, loosen our, especially our exclusive farmland restrictions. Um, and then, so that's C. And then the next one, so C. And also they even said in the comments that DLCD will probably oppose those. So if you have that upfront, you know that those are problematic from a state perspective also. And then policy, objective to policy E talks about ED, ADUs. And so same thing. Um, and there's no mention of vacation rentals and home, home occupations in this section. So, um, I wonder if we should include a nod to that or something also, because those are other things that can, um, well, in some places it can improve situations and in some places it can make things worse. So, um, increasing prices of land, making it more commercial and less agricultural, um, but also helping alleviate financial stress on current farmers. So there's a lot of push-pull in those different elements. And then finally, um, so this is a, the comp plan, it it, you know, it'll be the comp plan for twenty some years. And we're talking a lot about cannabis and hemp. And in ten or fifteen or twenty years, will this, will that be a big deal? Is it just a crop? And I wonder why we're pulling that crop out in particular to give so much extra attention in that context. Any farm, any farm activity, including like mink farms, for example, or, um, you know, feedlots, those all have neighbor conflicts as well, potential neighbor conflicts as well. And they're not pulled out in that same way. Anything that sprays pesticides also? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have some comments to make? Well, one of the things that I noted when I was reading through it, I appreciated the, uh, nineteen eighty agricultural lands goal three, uh, statistics. You start from nineteen forty nine and go through to about nineteen seventy eight. And you notice all the things going on in that period are going on in the seventy eight to twenty seventeen period. The number of farms is decreasing, the size is decreasing, the cost of the land is increasing, the number of the farmer's age is increasing. And it's interesting that Clasup is a little bit different to the rest of the, uh, state. Because in the state, the farms are getting bigger. Um, they're economizing in large farms. And the large farms are the ones, even though you're getting less farms because they're larger farms, they seem to be making a profit by going larger, you know? Whereas Clasup County seems to be on a different tact. They seem to be getting smaller, price of land going up. It's kind of almost like an evolutionary setup here. It's interesting that, you know, from nineteen forty nine until now, uh, a period of seventy odd years that we're still transitioning in that that direction. Anyway, that, I I kind of found that interesting. Any other comments, please? All right. Well, thank you for everybody on their comments on this. So Gail will go to the special projects update.
Okay, so the list of special projects was included in your agenda package. Uh, changes that occurred since last month were highlighted in yellow. And I'm really here to just answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have questions on that? I guess it was self-explanatory, Gail. So anybody have comments on the project status report?
Um, Gil, did you guys talk about predators as part of your elk, your elk group?
Only in a very general sense about what type of predators could be reintroduced potentially. And this was not given any serious or lengthy discussion beyond about two sentences. Like what, what if we reintroduced wolves or coy, wolves or coyotes back into the county to counteract the elk population? Um, but but other than that, no, there really was no consideration given.
Well, yeah, without even the reintroduction thing, you could just stop hunting of cougar. You know, currently I think you can hunt them. And that's their primary. We have them in my neighborhood even.
I think that, uh, Gerhart was going to put a wolf on every corner to try and dissuade the two hundred now resident elk to move out of town. They've definitely gone from forty to close to two hundred. I mean, they've got a real problem down there. Uh, and I noticed that in Cannon Beach, we've gone from the average seventeen to, this last week I counted twenty nine munching on the flower beds. So definitely increase. So I think predators is something that needs to be discussed in it. I think that's a good point, Nadia. Okay, so any other questions on that? Okay, so any other questions on that? So back on the project status report, things are looking pretty grim for Adelie in down in your neck of the woods, Nadia. It's going to be over in next month, I guess.
Last year, they renewed, right about now, last year, they renewed. I don't know.
Yeah, well, the 12-month extension is going to run out next month. Any other business to discuss, Gail?
The only other thing, I had sent an email asking that we talk about the presentation from Jenny Paul Radway and Consejo Hispano. You had wanted it in November. She had indicated she's not free in November and December, and I just need to know, do you want me to try to arrange this at a regular January meeting, or try to arrange a special session with her in a special meeting so that you can have a presentation?
Yeah, Nadia, your comments on that? I was for a special session, very.
Yeah, I referenced to Gail on it. I mean, so I think it's just a really, the Latinx community is our largest, is the Spanish-speaking community is our largest non-European community in our county, and we're talking a lot about community involvement, and I think it's great for all of us, the entire county, not just the planning commission, to engage on how to better involve those communities in what we do every day. And so what I suggested is that there's a lot of pressure right now on people of color to give these kinds of presentations, and so I, I, you know, I fully support her being busy doing all the work she does, plus trying to support us, white people that should have gotten on the program long ago. But if we, if we were, if she were willing to meet with us, I might suggest that it actually be a joint session between the county commission and the planning commission, and that staff and others, like full staff and others, be invited to attend as well, just to have the biggest impact.
What are your comments on that, Gail?
I'm waiting to hear what the consensus of the planning commission is. If Nadia is your spokesperson, then I'll go with what Nadia has recommended.
Well, I concur with what Nadia just proposed. Certainly a joint meeting of some sort, work session, whatever you want to call it, with the county commissioners, but inviting staff as well would be, I think, very beneficial. And try to get word out to the public that that's going to happen.
Just a comment.
Yeah, drop it.
I guess I'm too much in touch with alternate forms of basically anti-hate inclusionary processes. You know, there's a whole string of digital gatherings. There was one last evening for 90 minutes about the indigenous community. There was one late last week, same basic group about, you know, blacks in Oregon. There will be, it's a whole string going through mid-spring, then have, you know, Big Pow Wow, where they all get together. And I guess the idea that these little pale faces somehow haven't gotten saturated by information is odd to me. How, if anyone hasn't been saturated with this knowledge, where are you? You know, I'm not expecting us to get anything new that we don't already know, or we ought to be damned embarrassed not to already know anything that they will have to say. You know, and it's not going to make it any better to say, gee, we have to have a joint meeting with the board of commissioners. It's just that, that period, you know, there's just so much available that deals with discrimination in Oregon especially, on whatever front, you know, indigenees, blacks, Latinx, Pickett. And I, you know, anyway, period. There's, I don't see a need for another meeting, because I get to go hours of this stuff on, online, digitally, that I'm surprised if anybody didn't have links to go to last night's Columbus Day celebration. Or whatever, well, Lita's webinar late last week. You know, it just seemed like that, all that material already should be in our faces. You know, so it's not an opposition to it. No, I embrace it. I'm worn out from it. And it is astonishing that the pale faces still do what they do.
Okay, thank you. So are there any other comments on this subject from anybody else? So Nadia? Oh, sorry.
All I want to say is if you're involving that many people, would it be even successful to have it on a, on a session like this with that many people?
There were 386 there last night on the webinar about the indigenees. There were probably over 400 present on the webinar about treatment of blacks in Oregon. So the answer is yes, Myrna.
Yeah, but how many were speaking? How many were commenting?
There there was a chat window that if you had comments and questions, you could post continuously. But no, we did not have a camera on us. And we did not have our microphones on. But there was, you know, down at the bottom, there is a place to pose any thoughts you had all the way through it with hundreds, you know, of, you know, literally, I think it was 386 people sitting, watching the webinar last night about indigenees. You know, grander on, it even got down to the narrow issue of Clatsop Nahalem.
So I can see why you're worn out.
Yep.
I think there's actually, yeah, I think there's actually.
Nadia, what, what, what do you propose to do with this? I mean, what's, what's your goal for having this conversation?
Well, it started with our conversation about the word citizen, right?
Right.
And, and about community involvement, and so I think that's where it came from. It came from the group not recognizing why that word was difficult in terms of particular communities and, and maybe exclusionary. But it really is a larger problem, which is that I think some people are watching those videos, but the vast majority are not. And I think that all of our organizations in Clatsop County and beyond should be doing much deeper work, right? Diversity, equity, inclusion processes, looking at having an audit and going through, you know, honestly, a couple-year program to try to break down some of these institutional issues that we all have. Now, this in particular, my hope would be that we could learn more about Clatsop County's communities that speak Spanish, which are, you know, multi, and who they are, what they do, what some of the challenges that they face, how might be effective ways that we engage with them on a county level. So I think it's specific, that's what I envision it to be, is specific to who we are, where we are, and those communities that we have. And so I think that's different than talking about, I think, you know, of course, it intersects with the history of racism in Oregon and institutional racism and all that, but I was envisioning something a little bit more focused on on what we have going on and how we might make it better.
Okay, so.
This is the second, like, when I first moved here in Bociside in Cannon Beach, and I also worked at the city of Cannon Beach at the time, and I was always encouraging my students to, you know, testify on things that mattered to their communities, and they were scared to even walk in the door. And that was, you know, 20 years ago, and it hasn't changed, and so clearly, it, it's kind of in our lap to try to figure out how we might be able to bridge the divide as the privileged folk up here, and and, and again, I feel like this COVID thing is, is the silver lining, is it gives us an opportunity to reach people where they're at rather than asking them to walk through the door.
Well, you're asking them to participate in this electronically. I can see that's appears to be a safer way than walking through the door. But how far do you want to go with it? Do you want to have this as part of a regular meeting for the planning commission? Or do you want to take it through to the commissioners and ask the commissioners directly to run a meeting that has the participation of the planning commissioners, staff, and citizens? How big do you want to go with this?
I'm open. I'm open. I mean, the first step is, is she, is she interested and available to do that kind of work, and and then the second is, is the county manager and the county commission interested in hearing it also? We could do it just ourselves. It just feels like not a huge use of her very valuable time. So I thought it would be, I'm sure that some of those commissioners, if not all of them, would be interested in what she had to say.
Okay, so I guess then from what I'm hearing is that we should ask Gail to ask the commissioners whether it's a topic that they would like to take up and what their availability is, and go from there, and then we get back to your contacts and say, okay, we're ready to have you make a presentation, give us the dates, and set it up that way. Would you be in agreeance to that?
Sure.
So Gail, I guess we should ask the commissioners and say that the planning commission is interesting for them to set up a meeting on this subject and see what the availability is and what their schedule is, and see if we can coordinate it. Because it appears to me that if we're going to have a joint session, it's not going to be part of our regular planning commission meeting. So I think this is something that we should ask the commissioners to instigate and plan at their discretion, because they're the ones that are on the super busy list, and they've got other county things that they've got to put into line with this. So do you think you could perhaps instigate that conversation and get back to us on it?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. So any other comments? No other business? Well, then I thank everybody. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.